All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Village Council of Yellow Springs for September 18th, 2023. And Judy, if you could call the role, please.
Yes, how's?
I'm here.
Stokes?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
DeBor Leonard?
Here.
Anne McQueen, can you hear us? Nope, I don't think she can hear us. So she is attempting to join the meeting, but we haven't quite got her on yet. We'll see if we can get that worked out. Also present is interim village manager Johnny Burns and Ben Sparks, superintendent of electric and water, village solicitor Amy Blankenship.
Okay. So do we have any announcements? All right, well, I've always got a few. So I did want to mention that Kevin and I had agreed check in with Johnny, the first of a monthly, regular thing that we're doing. And we've decided to do those between, oh, wait, look at that.
That's me just giving up on the.
All right, so we might get the technology figured out, but we'll be doing those in between the first and second meeting of every month. So Mary Ann and I will be meeting with Johnny next month. But I think one of the main things that we focused on in this first check in was just how the transition was going. Seems like it's going pretty well. And we'll have a lot of updates when we get to the manager's report. I wanted to mention, you know, as we're thinking about street fair coming up, and I have my formerly reusable cup, that I'm reminded of a few things about street fair. Again, I think we're going to talk about that during the manager's report, since I know there's a meeting tomorrow. I'm really concerned about the lack of support for bike parking, which was elevated last time. It's not seemed to be resolved. I've seen a variety of emails going on. Johnny, I hope that you're going to be talking about that at the meeting tomorrow. And then just kind of a general reminder that what's always made the case for the significant amount of taxpayer dollars that we invest in street fair is local business, local artists and artisans, and local nonprofits. And I want to make sure that that's not missed in the shuffle. So it does make me think, Kevin, if you're not at those meetings as our chamber liaison, then maybe, you know, somebody else needs to be there because there are a lot of policy implications around street fair in particular. I'll talk about this construction thing later. Porch Fest was amazing. Great job to the organizers. Thanks to everybody that was involved. It was a great day. It seemed like everybody was super happy. Wanted to highlight the World House Choir is celebrating 10 years. Hopefully, everybody knows about that. You can learn more at worldhousechoir.org. But they're performing this Thursday at 7:00 PM, Friday at 7:00 PM, and Saturday at 4:00 PM at the Foundry Theater. And the theme is all about recognizing freedom and just kind of all the things that are not going so well right now that need to be recognized. And then, yeah, I thought I would mention September 29th is going to be a 50th anniversary of the Miami Valley Bike Way system. And not everyone knows this, but apparently in 1973, in Troy, the first segment of the Bike Way was built. And now we're the nation's largest paved trail network. And so I invite anybody to come up. They're going to be meeting up at the Boathouse, which has a great restaurant, by the way, that afternoon. And the last thing I'm going to mention, and it kind of is a nice segue to our special report, is October 1st to 7th is Public Power Week. And that's an opportunity for us to celebrate the importance of having our electric utility. We're going to be talking a lot tonight about like, how important that is for our community and for sustainability. And I also want to mention Johnny, I think, as you know, AMP's got some great resources for ways that we can promote that on our Facebook page and whatnot. So if we can solicit Erica's skills in that regard, that would be great. So that's what I've got. And if there are no other announcements, well.
Yeah. Well, I just have a question. So we've been, this has been coming up more often lately. I'm just wondering if I'm, like, if I understand the way the announcements work. So when we're doing announcements, so like, that's, it's legitimate, you have questions or ideas about street fair. I'm just trying to figure out, like, is this where we're supposed to put them? Like, if we have questions or thoughts about things that aren't on the agenda, or that might just be like a quick thought or something, is that, is this, I'm just making sure I know how this works. Is that the appropriate time to do it?
It's been, I guess, for the last six years, a place to do it.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So that's an okay practice to just sort of say, okay, if I have a quick thing I want to throw in. But people understand that it's, it's a, it's a personal opinion. It's not like the announcements are like reflective of what everybody thinks, and that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Cool. All right. Anything else? All right. Okay, so I think we're going to go into the consent agenda. We got the minutes and the credit card statements. So first of all, the minutes from the last meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the credit card statement, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll just, in a second?
Hmm.
Okay. And I'll just ask any questions about the credit card statement? Okay.
Is Mary Ann on, Judy?
I saw her. Yes, again. She dropped off. She was there.
Oh.
I mean, you can go ahead. She's going to have lost that whole trunk there, so that's not a big.
I mean, the only thing I will mention, just because I didn't remember seeing it before, is, you know, just keeping in mind that there are credits and debits on that statement. And so I noticed this time around, like, the, the payment of the credit card was like highlighted on there, which probably had been in the past. But, I mean, that's what that, like, 75, 35 amount was, or whatever. So that's just that we're automatically paying the credit card. So, okay. So all those in favor of approving the credit card statement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Review of the agenda. So anything we need to add, remove, revise?
Okay.
Then, yeah, I was going to say, for, well, maybe I'll say it later, but for the first time ever, we don't have legislation, which is, yeah, I mean, that is like remarkable. So I guess we've been doing a good job. So Kevin?
Yeah.
Petitions and communications.
Thank you very much, Brian. Good evening, everyone. The clerk has received and will file several letters from Green County Health Department. One, Car Fit for Seniors, where seniors can bring their vehicles by and make sure everything's all safety checked. There's Fetal Alcohol Syndrome Disorder Awareness Month. Also, National Preparateness Month, which is natural preparing, that you're making sure you prepare for a natural disaster. I mean, inclined to say have a go-bag, but that's the wrong, the wrong context. But just make sure you have all the supplies you need prepared for natural disasters. And September is also Food Safety Awareness Month. So a lot of good information about the month of September from Green County Health. There's also a letter from Tracy Collier regarding traffic safety. And then the mayor's clerk has submitted the monthly mayor's reports. And that is the extent of what we have for petitions and communications. Thank you.
Okay. And then, I guess Judy was supposed to put Gary's letter.
It was like, so late.
Yeah.
You know what? I did not put it at your table. I sent it to everyone.
Okay.
I did not print it up.
Which, I mean, technically, you don't have to review, but I think good just to highlight that if we do have a painting opportunity, and that makes sense, you know, Gary highlighted that putting green down where there are major bike crossings is a best practice. So I don't know if we've done all that work, but that's why he put it in last minute. So.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So no legislation. Do we have any citizen concerns?
Just, it looks like Mary Ann's saying something in the chat. I don't know.
So Mary Ann said she has no audio, or she texted me, and that she is just going to listen in on Facebook.
Okay.
So, and I'll watch in case she has anything that she wants to alert us to. All right, Mark Heiss.
Mark Heiss, Yellow Springs Chamber, and just wanted to point out that you missed in the announcements that the sunflower fields will be blooming this next weekend. So we'll have two weekends of sunflowers at Tecumseh, at the Whitehall Farm, compliments of Dave and Sharon, and then Tecumseh Land Trust, so.
Right. Thanks for highlighting that, Mark. And, and I know that the Chamber and Tecumseh Land Trust are supporting that activity and keeping everybody safe. So thank you. Okay? Any, yeah, Lisa.
Hey there.
Hi.
Hey.
Just wanted to make sure that I understand that you all direct the village manager in his work, correct? That's, that's council's job, right?
Uh huh.
One of them. Okay. So I'd like to ask you to direct Johnny, or someone on his staff, to attend YSDC meetings. I know that he's always invited, goes away whenever he could. It's an efficient way of information sharing and collaboration so that we can stay in front of things because we get information from different sources. And I know Johnny's still doing two jobs, so his time is stretched. So I appreciate that. The second thing is, I know you're continuing to hear from neighbors about noise, and traffic, and speeding, and all of those things. And I just would like to put a bug in your ear to consider some sort of comprehensive urban planning for the downtown area, and especially for the residents who are, who encompass the downtown. And I don't just mean Central Business District. I mean, those, those roads that feed into the Central Business District that are being impacted. It doesn't look like a concerted, comprehensive effort from the neighbors yet. But just think about what happens when the comedy club opens, and how many more neighbors. And when the, the new eatery opens, how many more neighbors? You're going to start hearing from about noise, and traffic, and speeding. So I'd like you to think about how to get ahead of this somehow with some, some sort of urban planning that, that could help with these, these issues, and not just, not just try to address them one squeaky wheel at a time. That's it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah. Is it okay to ask a question?
Sure.
So just to be clear, are those both things that YSDC is, is it like a?
Oh, no, 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 sorry. The second one is me.
Okay.
Personally.
Got it.
As a neighborhood resident who's impacted especially by motorcycle noise.
Got it. Cool. Thank you.
But echoes plenty that we've heard from folks downtown and beyond. So, okay. All right. Then I think we're going to move into special reports. And I believe we got Mike here to talk about our electric system. So, yeah, come on up.
All right. I have another presentation. Judy, are you running a presentation, or how?
Well, we're having a little technical difficulty. So I'm going to try to pull this thing up. And this one does not have the slide replacement in it, but
Okay, that's all right.
The one that Ben is showing does. The one that's going out on Zoom is, is correct.
And I guess, I mean, Johnny, do you want to say anything about, like, you know, beyond celebrating Public Power Month, like why?
Well, sure. So we went out for IRP through AMP, and Encompass was chosen about two and a half years ago. And we had actually met Mike at an AMP conference, Ben and I did. And then he was chosen to be the engineer. Mike has done a great job with Jeff Swegood to really get into the system. They have helped develop our electrical grid on the GIS system along with Ben, to be able to really highlight everything that we need to be able to give them the data that they got. So the GIS system is fantastic. They've got us up and going. Staff got it up and going. They've, they've put their hands into it. Staff's modified it. So now when we need fault current information, we can reach out to Encompass, and they can get us the correct data. So, and then we've asked Mike and Encompass to give us a, what I call an RDN, a five-year and a 10-year look, and that is what they're presenting.
Right. And RDN, in case everyone doesn't know, means right darn now. So things that we need to make sure that we take care of to continue to have a vibrant electrical grid. So, Mike, take it away.
Okay. Well, thanks for having me. Pleasure meeting all of you. Johnny kind of gave the introduction. My firm, so me personally, I've been in public power, working with public power since 1996, I believe. So I've had a long career working with many different municipals, not just in Ohio, but really all over the nation. But, you know, that's my roots. You know, I started with a consulting firm dealing with only public power back in 96. 2001, I started my own company focusing on really the design aspect. So helping municipal clients was, was the first task that I had. But that's grown into really a wide variety of different clientele. So we do a little of everything. That's what the name means, Encompass. You know, I purchased a, an architecture and full scope firm about six years ago. So, you know, we do mechanical, electrical, structural, you know, civil, all of those things, architectural, right down to the residential level. So we really do, do about everything. But our bread and butter, our focus still is on electric power. So, you know, we're, we're a small company. We're right up the road in Findlay, Ohio. So, you know, it's roughly two hours away from here. But we've done, we've done some rather big things, you know, over my career. I've, you know, had the opportunity and the pleasure of working on many different projects, you know, from small to absolutely huge. And that includes, you know, three, three years ago, we started the world's large, commissioning of the world's largest battery system at that time. So Florida Power and Light built, they called the Manatee Battery, Battery Energy Storage System. And that was 409 megawatts. We put that in service in 2022. Huge project. So like I said, we, we can do a lot of things for, for being a small firm. And that's just a couple of quick pictures of it. As Johnny said, you know, we took on kind of a planning study, if you will, for you guys. So you were seeing a lot of load growth. You were seeing a lot of things happening all at once. You were having some electrical system problems. All of those things happen when you get very fast load growth, you know. So we took it on. We did model your system, as Johnny said. So there's the GIS. And then also, in addition to that, we did what we call an electrical system model. So all of that information was entered into a database model, if you will. And then we kind of analyze it and come up with different plans and identify the weak points. We come up with, okay, what's needed to, you know, get your system back in good working order. What are your, Johnny called them right darn now, or whatever. But, you know, I've got immediate projects. I've got the mid-range and the long term. So, and that's kind of common. Normally, you see, okay, what do I got to do, you know, right darn now? What do I need to do within five years, you know, as load growth continues? 10 years, what should I be looking at for the community in terms of serving, you know, power needs? One, one slide I didn't put in here is, you know, per capita usage of electricity, you know, everybody using electric, that trend has just continued to go up, right? We, we always say we're going to get more efficient, we're going to do better, but something else comes out, you know. Whether it be cell phones, or, you know, TVs, iPads, you know, the latest trend, of course, will be, you know, electric vehicle chargers and things like that, as they start to make their way into people's homes. And, you know, those are the kind of things that you have to be aware of. Electricity usage doesn't tend, tend to go down. And, you know, it just continues to go up. So you guys, specifically, you've seen some load growth, you know, from, you know, there's the Cresco facility, you know, that's, that looks like that's going to be a major impact on, on your system load. You've got the DDC project going on, the residential development. You've got just normal load growth. You know, you've got the restaurants, the comedy club, the, all the things going on. And generally, what happens when you see that is, it's a compounding effect. So you bring more people, well, what happens? Well, you build more businesses to service those people. So, you know, it tends to kind of snowball into quite a bit of electric load growth. So we did kind of come up with a, you know, capital plan, if you will, got a project needs assessment. Left-hand column is kind of the right darn now. It's, you know, one of the problems you guys were having is, is you were having outages where, you know, something might happen at this house, but, well, the whole street's going out for some reason. And, you know, we call that a coordination issue. So that was part of the planning study, was to look at it and correct some of those issues. So that's your first item there. We've got installing arc flash labels. So basically, OSHA says, since you guys own facilities, you need to have some warning labels on some of your equipment. So, you know, that's your municipal facilities. We need to get some labels put on to your equipment. And we do that through an electric study, through this model. We come up with what those hazards are and how to protect yourself. Then we get into some of the actual projects. There are some later slides, if you really want to dig in, you know, where we kind of go through each of these in detail. But, you know, we've got a few quick, quick-hit projects, if you will. if you will. There's a section on Dayton Street, you know, we've got a reconductor, we've identified that as a potential bottleneck as you see some load growth. There's the DDC subdivision, we have to bring in new electric feeds to feed that facility, so that's kind of an obvious one, since we're building all the houses, we've got to supply electricity to it. There's, and then we've got build new middle circuit. So right now you have an east and a west circuit. You know, the utility gives you a feed from both directions. We want to put a middle circuit in, if you will, kind of to move some of the load that's existing onto the new circuit. And that's kind of part of the DDC project, as well as some other work that we're planning.
Excuse me, Mike, for the sake of common folk, reconductor, could you explain?
Yeah, yeah, yep. Yep, so reconductor is, so if you look up on top of the utility poles, right, you'll see there's wires up there, right? And right now they're just too small for the load growth that's coming. So we'll actually leave as many of the poles as we can, but we'll go in and take the old conductor down and we'll put heavier, you know, higher-rated conductor up there. So, you know, I think most of it's, you've got number six, number two copper, you know, around, we'll end up putting some heavier gauge up there.
That's great. Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'm sure everyone probably can get that load growth just means, you know, more, the electric system needs to handle more power. I was curious, we don't need to think north to south, like the, putting something between east and west is enough to handle?
Oh, well, you know, and it's, now those lines, we call them east, east and west, but they actually run from north to south.
Okay.
So, but they're on the east side and they're on the west side.
Gotcha.
So, but, you know, it's kind of what covers your village now, it's two distinct circuits.
Right.
You know, so we want to put a third to give you flexibility to move loads around, switch loads from here to there, have some flexibility if you have outages and stuff.
And what does, what does a third circuit look like? I, you know, I looked at the map, but how does that like?
Yeah, so the way it looks, you know, and we've kind of got some stuff identified here. Unfortunately, we kind of got it broken up into sections, so I don't think it overall, but basically from your, and Johnny ought to help me out with directions, but up on the north end, then I'm sure what that road's called.
It's Enon. No, I'm sorry, Fairfield. Is that where you're talking about?
We're a circuit switching station.
Yeah, Fairfield.
Yep. So, you know, you have two circuits brought in there, and the way the third one looks is we just build another circuit. So physically, it doesn't look a lot different, you know, as you're driving down the street, you can't tell which one's east, west, you know. It's, we'll have to identify all that for you.
Right.
But on the maps, it'll look like essentially from that point coming down south, it'll go through like the DDC project. It'll go a little further south, there's some, what's that abandoned area?
It'd go from, it'd come from a glass farm, underneath the glass farm, through the DDC project, and basically down Wright Street, and then it'd catch the wings of Dayton Street.
Gotcha. And does it also contemplate if we ever figure out how to do solar ifurnay or whatever? I mean, could that be?
It could, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can catch on.
Yeah, we're setting it up for the load growth, and then solar actually kind of has the opposite effect, so it reduces your circuit load.
Gotcha.
So, you know, as long as you have load on the system, which normally during the sun, you know, people usually have their air conditioners on, so you've got plenty of load, you're just offsetting your load. So.
Cool.
So those are kind of your, you know, right now projects. Five-year, you know, we've got some other things identified, you know, we want to break up your system with some reclosers. Basically that means, basically we're just looking at big chunks. So we have a recloser that kind of protects this chunk, you know, and we'll have several of them, basically that if there's an outage, if it's something major, right, then it will not take your whole circuit down, but it may take a large chunk depending on what happens. So that's what the recloser capacitors are. Continue pole replacements, I didn't really put a dollar figure on that, but that's kind of an ongoing project. That's just normal maintenance, so do you guys have a program where you test them? If they're bad, you replace them. Again, we're back to reconductoring, you know, kind of the east circuit, the backbone area. In other words, you know, the area that's really supporting the load, we'll have to upgrade and be fed up. Relocate some switching between the east and west circuits. Again, we're just kind of going to reconfigure things, so, you know, once we get the middle circuit in, we'll have to change where you put your switching points. Again, there's another reconductor project on the east main line, reconductor near the wastewater treatment plant, again, as load is occurring. Then, so the first part where we said build the middle circuit, that's kind of the north part of it. And then the second part here where we say build middle circuit backbone through abandoned right-of-way, that's kind of the south part, and then we'll tie that in on the south side. Reconductor in industrial area, and that's kind of the scope of kind of your five-year projects.
So just want to ask a question. I understand immediate, midterm, you know, five-year, 10-years, so five and 10 are nice numbers, but, and so they're good placeholders.
Yep.
But if money were not an object, would we, A, be doing this all right-of-way, or would the five-year projects want to get done in like two or three years?
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's, you're exactly right. A plan like this essentially needs kind of constant attention, and really that's kind of what, you know, Johnny's group needs to do. That's the nice thing about the model, like he can say, hey, you know, we just had a huge load coming in, right? Run that in the model. What's that, how does that impact things? And then, yeah, so we might shift what's in the 10-year or a 5-year, we might move that over and say, well, we got to do that now.
Right.
You know, so really, it's one of those things where I always tell communities, if they're going to do this plan, make sure you revisit it at least once a year. You know, go back, look at it again. It's not a lot of money for us to just, you know, update it, and it's already modeled. We did the hard work.
So Mike, you just answered my next question. You said it's not a lot of money for us to do, but we will have some level of access to the existing model down the road as new situations.
Yeah, as much as you want. You know, it's a highly technical model. Often staff doesn't have, you know, either the personnel to do it, or they don't want to spend the money on, say, a software license because it's about $10,000 a seat.
Okay.
So it just kind of depends on, right? But we have some clients, yeah, they absolutely have a model. We give them the software, they put it on their systems, they run it. We have some that, you know, they send us maps at the end of the year and they say, hey, update the model.
Right.
You know, so we can work with you, whatever's most comfortable for you.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
And then the 10-year, that's kind of the biggie. You know, at some point, your load growth is going to hit a point where you're going to say, we should open our own substation. So right now you're in good shape, you know, your load is below what the utility can serve you, they can serve you about two and a half times where you're at, so you're in pretty good shape, but at some point you're going to want to say, we need our own substations. And, you know, so I think at some point we're going to, on that north end, rebuild your switching station as a substation. So I've got that as, again, as like a placeholder at the 10-year mark, if you will.
And what does it mean if we have our own substation?
Basically, so you're right now, you're served at what we call distribution level, so 12,470 volts. What we would do is we would work with, probably through AMP, through a system impact study, where we would get with the utility and say, we want to build a substation, we're looking at X number of megawatts of load now, and in five years, 10 years, this is what we're looking at. They'll study it, come back, and they'll tell you, okay, well, we'll build you a line, a transmission line, so that'll probably be, when I looked, you have a 69,000 volt, that's pretty close, so they'll bring in a higher voltage line. Then you'll put a transformer in and then serve your existing circuit. So all the work we've been doing, we'll just move it to your own substation, so it'll be served from your own transformer.
So we would still, though, have to rely on like Dayton or whatever?
We would rely on transmission voltage.
Okay. I mean, so we'd still, I mean, we couldn't, it wouldn't be more independent? Okay.
It does a couple of things for you, though. Inherently, transmission voltage is more reliable than distribution voltage.
Gotcha.
So, you know, there's a lot more wires on a distribution system versus transmission, it's high up in the air, usually not as long, so, you know, so.
Side note to the last two big outages we've taken has been transmission.
It happens. It happens, right? I mean, tornadoes or storms or whatever, yeah, but, yeah, certainly, you know, it can ruin your day, too. So that's kind of the plan, you know, and then the rest of the slides kind of go through, you know, in more detail, you know, I kind of skip over that, but.
Gavin, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Johnny, this might be a question for you, and I'll just say, if I ask any of this and it's going to take a long answer, I'm happy to talk about it later or whatever. But, so when you, we're looking at these projects, how much of this is sort of already factored into the rate increases, the like current sort of operating expectations versus are we looking at these numbers going, we got to find a whole bunch of new money?
Probably right to the right damn nails. So we're five years, we probably need to start planning ahead now. Some of this we knew was coming, but what Ben and myself have been projecting, you know, we're just trying to keep it going and we're doing improvements daily, but further out, we probably need to start looking. John Courtney is also reviewing this whole thing, not for, to be able to look at the village, to be able to say, okay, this is what we need to do going forward as far as finances and.
Okay. So let me just make sure I heard you right. So like these stuff that's in the immediate project stuff, am I hearing you say that that might be factored in?
Yes.
But that the five-year and beyond stuff, we still need to figure out where to put it in?
We have some stuff in our capital outlay.
Yeah.
But we have not budgeted for out seven, eight, nine years.
Okay.
But for the first five years, yes, it's in capital already.
Okay. And then, so this, like the modeling and your work, is this just like part of our contract, or like, is this, was this like an additional project essentially?
Yeah, we contracted for this study.
Okay.
Yeah, this was the goal of the study.
Okay.
Come up with a plan.
That was it? Okay. Great. And then, I'm hoping this is a softball, I'm assuming that with Johnny here, that we're in a good position in terms of having people at the village that have knowledge and expertise in this issue area. I guess I'm just wondering, you've worked with a lot of municipalities around the country, around, and here in Ohio. I'm from Bluffton, by the way, just up the road from Finley.
Oh, yeah, I'm in Gennaro, so.
Right on. So I guess, can you just speak to, like, does it feel like we have a good team that's able to work on these issues and effectively, you know, managing our electric grid currently?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, we haven't worked together that long, but Johnny and Ben are both doing a great job, you know, from a planning perspective, getting ahead of it, right? Those are the things you have to do on an electric system. When you don't, that's when you get in trouble, you know, from a reliability standpoint, and that's what, you know, Johnny recognized, hey, we're starting to have some system problems, we've got more outages than I like, you know, we have areas of the town that are going out that shouldn't be, so we need to fix this. And, you know, he reached out, found us, you know, we're going to clear up those problems. You know, Ben and I have worked on a couple of issues already and cleared up some areas, so, you know, I think you're in a pretty good place, you know, from that standpoint.
Cool.
Excellent.
And I do see a lot of them. I see a wide variety of, you know, some I leave and it's like, oh my gosh, they're in trouble, right? I mean, they got to hire somebody. And some, you know, it's like, wow, they're doing a fantastic job. And you guys are definitely towards that fantastic job. You're, you know, these guys are doing a good job on your system.
Excellent. Good to know. Thank you. So there were no surprises, no?
No, no, you know, I got some gray. I've, you know, I've worked on a lot of systems, a lot of models, you know, I've worked on models as big as most of the eastern United States, back when I used to do regulatory expert witness work, right? It was grueling, but, yeah, so I worked with some big systems, so, you know, and unfortunately, I'd had to work like with the state of Hawaii on their system, right?
Wow.
Yeah, so, really no surprises, you know, and the things that we're clearing up, you know, it's normal stuff, right? The system was built, you know, 30, 40 years ago, you have stuff that just needs to be replaced. You had a small community without a lot of load growth, and then all of a sudden, it's kind of like, you know, it starts like that compounding thing I was talking about, it's just kind of, once it starts, it kind of seems like it doesn't slow down a lot.
Right, right. And you said something earlier that really caught my attention in general about the growth of electrical needs, and I guess it's difficult perhaps to forecast how quickly our load will grow? I mean, you could count households.
Right.
But you don't know how many computers and phones.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything else everybody has, so it's just exponential growth.
It's just natural human behavior, right, as more convenience items come along. And the goal, you know, we probably all recognize it, is to electrify everything, right? Everything needs to be battery-operated or, you know, convenient to you, you know, you grab it and you go. We're seeing it with electric cars, and that's, that's one thing, I will say, where the country has not spent the money is on the distribution system. So you guys are very smart doing that because, you know, that's where a lot of load growth is going to occur nationwide. So as, you know, every home wants to get, you know, at least one electric vehicle or whatever, they want a charger, they're going to have to have a charger. And, you know, that's an area where the grid is not prepared, you know, and it's going to be an issue in a lot of places. And the fact that you guys are improving yours, you know, you hopefully won't be one of those communities. You'll be ahead of it and have things in good working order.
Good. Well, that's money well spent right there. We appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, sure. I've seen a lot of things, so I think you guys are in a good spot.
Okay. One other question, which is just, so you flagged in here that, and this might probably a question for you, Johnny, that the, so like the DDC developmental costs, you know, the reconductor, $120,000. So we obviously, we negotiated the stuff with DDC on the sewer line, so just, I don't, it's probably a stupid question, but why not, why aren't they paying for this, too?
Okay. So I already flagged that because I knew you was going to bring it up. I knew some of them was going to bring it up. So DDC did pay for the circuit going into from the solar field. What that cost is, is to get it from the DDC development to Dayton Street so we can have more than one way to feed that current plant. So we're going to take on the cost to make it more of a loop system up Wright Street and up Kenneth Hamilton Way. So we just don't want to have one switch to them and then be done. It will also allow us to change some circuits around in the near future when we do some reconductory.
Okay. So it gives us some more flexibility and maybe some more resilience for that area? Okay. Thank you.
Now, the other point to that, and Ben can speak to this as well, when we do that third circuit, then we need to get easements and rightaways from the switch station, and it only, what we're going to do in the first part of it is to like do the middle section, and then we'll go back and do the beginning.
Thank you. Great.
I also want to make one point. When you asked me if we had planned for this capital improvements a long time ago, or if it's in the budget, what I can say, and Ben can speak to this as well, by allowing us to hire more staff and have more people, we are already ahead of the game because a lot of the stuff on the RDNs is stuff that Ben and his staff are working on currently. So we're not going to have to contract that part of it out, we're going to do that in-house.
Great.
Yeah, we've been doing some problem solving on what, you know, Ben and I, saying, hey, what about this, or thinking about doing that, and then we, you know, we've been able to kind of work with them, so.
Carmen, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. I mean, so what it looks to like to me is, in terms of what we need to do right damn now, is we've got that in our electric fund.
Correct.
I mean, you know, and so I think that's part of why Johnny has, you know, tried to make sure we don't defer those funds to other utility funds.
Correct.
And it seems like we're in pretty good shape for five-year, so, yeah, so I think, you know, from what I understand of what we're, you know... you know, from what, what I understand of what we're, you know, what we built in our electric fund, we're in pretty good shape.
Correct.
So, and then I, I think the other thing I understand is that, I mean, it'd be great to fix all the poles like tomorrow, but we don't have the capacity, I mean, these, this has to be spread out over time.
Correct, and I was going to ask Ben a question, and sorry to put you on the spot, how many poles do you have identified right now from the 21 pole testing that need to be changed out? So we've taken it, Ben and his staff has taken it from the 230s to 20s. So that's, that's since 14, correct Ben? So about 260 poles have been changed in, since 2014. And so now we've got it down to 20, and they're actively doing that.
Great.
And bad poles are a, a major contributor to outages, that's, that's definitely, you got a good plan.
Great.
Great.
Okay, well, anything else Johnny?
I think I might.
Okay, no, I appreciate your time and allowing me to come in tonight.
Yeah.
If you guys have any questions, just follow up from, yeah.
I was going to see if Ben had anything that you wanted to add, you good?
That sounds great.
Okay.
All right, thanks Ben.
Oh man, that was a feel-good session, so, at least I feel good.
Anytime you can tell somebody you got to spend seven million dollars and they feel good, I think I've done my job.
Yeah, right. Indeed, great job.
Now we just have to control those squirrels and then we'll be all set. All right.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so then, I guess our other special report, you're going to talk a little bit about municipal broadband Johnny?
Well, I was going to give you an update, I have been working with Thor, Eric and I had our first meeting with Thor, they are about 100% done with the backbone, and 65% done with the pole to house, so backbone.
When you say backbone, you just mean in the pilot area?
Just mean in the pilot area.
Okay, good.
Correct. So from pole to pole, they're 100% done. Where they're lacking is from pole to house, and then being able to get the hardware store in there to be able to hook it up. So they're about 65% done. The holdup is, is the contractor is in and out, in and out, Thor is trying to give me a better schedule to be able to do that, to be able to say, this is our completion date. The other thing, Thor, Eric is working on a meeting right now to work with Scott, myself, Tim, and Thor to go over applications, building, trying to see where we're at with that, so once I get that meeting, I'll be able to come back with a better update.
And then it looked like we didn't get a update about like communities.
Okay.
The emails I saw, right?
Correct.
I heard something about the, so is the Emporium on our system now?
I, I would have to ask.
Okay, all right, because I, I know, you know, there was also that, you know, the last municipal broadband meeting we had was about the, the line that connected Dino's and some other folks was maybe not like positioned in the right way and.
Correct.
Okay.
I do know that Maveka had a big update over the weekend, so there was quite a big outage, including the police department, so we had to transfer to Green County until about 1:45, and then the broadband come back up about 5:45, so.
Okay, so it sounds like, and, you know, I told you I'd reached out to Scott Fife, didn't really get, you know, a substantial update, I appreciate what we got in the packet, so when's the plan for next meeting or?
The next, the next meeting for myself and Erica with the SpringsNet staff about applications and all that will be by Friday, we're trying it for Friday, or Thursday afternoon, so.
Okay.
We're trying to figure out where the applications are, how many is left to be hooked up, where we are with the communications with the building, we're trying to get all those I's dotted and T's crossed where then we can start asking their role.
Okay, so, so then maybe like we'll have a real update at the October second meeting. So I guess related to that, you know, Mother Mary Ann can hear us or not, like, I think it would be good to loop Mary Ann in.
Yes.
She has a lot of questions, and then if it was a second council member, I mean, I don't know, like, I mean, Kevin and I have been involved, but, you know, Gavin, if you were a cat.
I'm good, I'm, I'm good.
So.
No, you look like a broadband constituent.
I mean, Carmen, do you want to be in the mix?
No, I'm good, awesome.
Okay, all right, so then I would say like, you know, loop in Kevin, like I, you know, I've got my own channels or whatever, but I, I feel like Mary Ann had some like substantive questions that could inform that update, so.
Okay, great. Could I?
Yes.
Can I ask a question before we move on? So I'm just making sure I'm understanding, so when we talked, I think it was at the last meeting, I think, one of the last old meetings, I think it was you Brian, maybe it was somebody else, had mentioned that there might be sort of like a scaled solution for expanding.
That's loop communities, yeah.
Okay, so basically that's, we don't know yet, we're going to, it's still, I didn't just miss that.
Right.
Okay.
So they are supposed to come to us with a proposal, and what they would potentially do is build out the rest of the system, they, there's a revenue sharing model where, you know, for every customer, you know, they, we get money for that, but also what they have is the infrastructure piece, which, you know, just in terms of like the, the service and, and other things that we don't really have a great solution for right now, you know, so, so yeah, so those are the things that they could bring to the table.
Okay, and so this is like, we went out and looked for companies who do this, and this was the one, or they came to us, or like how to?
They came to us, yeah, so they saw what we were doing, and, and they've done this, what's the community that they're, I can't remember. I almost felt like it was Finley or something, but anyway.
So these kinds of things would be in the report whenever we would get the update on, right? Okay, we don't need to go into it, I'm just.
But yeah, but what's.
Interested.
What's interesting about them is their model is to elevate the community initiative as opposed to being like a Cincinnati Bell or, you know, some other kind of, and then ultimately, once they get compensated for whatever they invest, they hand it over to the community if that's what they want, so, so yeah, but we have not gotten that proposal yet.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well then I guess we can roll into the manager's report.
All righty.
Which I think looks really good, I appreciate the work on reformatting the manager's report, so thank you, and, and I'm sure you had some team members help as well, so thanks to.
All the team members pitched in on this one.
Great.
And if it's not what you want to see, or you want to see something else, just feel free to let us know. Meg did the economic development part of it, and she went to a lot of meetings, so that could change in the future the way it looked, she, she attended a lot of different meetings, and she's put down there what she's been doing for, like the itinerary that come forward, actually, DDC is coming October 10th for the housing, for the final plat application, she attended some Home Inc. meetings. The one thing that I want, I, I don't know that anybody caught it last time, but I put it in there again, going to the infrastructure part of it, is we did win first place in Ohio Rural Water, but then we went to Columbus and went to the AWWA, which is all the larger communities in Columbus, and we actually won first place in that division as well. So Brad will be going to DC in February to be able to take our water for the Ohio Rural Water, and then again, probably someone should represent in California. Kevin volunteered.
Yeah, I already got the water.
So I think it's a great thing for staff and for the community to know, and, and council to know that we have been making a difference, and to, since 2014, when you turn on your faucet, you know, and you possibly have brown water, now we're, we've actually won two of them back to back. And, and that's done on clarity test of the smell, the tasting, and I will have to say that Gina Hayes was on the EPA, she was on this testing facility, and she used to be a member, or a villager here in the town, so she was also, and they had no clue whose water was what, so.
Right.
It, it was a great thing, Brad's, Brad and his team was super stoked on it, so.
Well, and I wondered, yeah, because I guess, I don't think we did catch that we were in that second round, you know.
So we wanted to highlight that again.
That was really cool.
So, the other thing is that the water tower went back on today, the tests come back and they put it back online this afternoon, so we're back to having two towers. We do have hydrant flushing scheduled for the week of the 25th, I believe, it is on this report somewhere, it's the week of the 25th, September 25th, we'll be doing hydrant flushing. So we, we will get that message out, Channel 5 with Facebook, and it'll also be on the website that will be flushing hydrants. The broadband, I've already just, I just gave that a little bit, I'm going to ask Amy to speak on the JNT, to give the solicitors update on the JNT, because that's where we've, we've handed it off to their firm.
Okay, great.
So we've got some construction attorneys working on, working with the surety on JNT, there's been some back and forth, letters back and forth, exactly what you would expect when you have lawyers involved on both sides, and they've asked for some more information, Johnny and his team provided them with that information, and now they're reviewing the claim to see where our coverage will, what our coverage will extend to. So at this point, there's not much more to report than that, I do believe that we will have coverage for the claim, and we're just going to have to ride it out here a little bit and see where it, where it shakes out.
Do we anticipate that being 100% coverage, I mean, I don't know if that's what the.
So there were several addenda to the original project, and that's where I think everyone's looking to see where the line's going to get drawn, on, from the original bid to then what was added on. You might remember that, Johnny can speak this better than I can, that we, there was more money that came in than was expected, and so the project was expanded at that point, so there's questions as to what, what coverage we'll have and how far it'll go.
So, so in a perfect world where, when the project was expanded, would that have been appropriate for a surety, whatever the insurance company is, to have been notified and for them to assess, you know, whether all those add-ons are.
I can, so when the project was released, it come in a bid, it come in way lower than what the engineer estimate was. Addendums one and two was with the original bid package. We went back to the state of Ohio and asked if we could add on, seeing as how we had 1.2 million dollars, and it was right at 700,000, they said, sure, go ahead. We then put out addendum three to JNT to ask for that pricing for the other 32 houses, I believe. They did not send back addendum three because they was also filed bankruptcy at the same time. So the surety bond company is basically not on the hook for addendum three because we never got our price from. Addendum four, we changed just here recently to allow them to go with a PVC style versus copper, to be able to help them out as well as complete our project.
Right.
So that is what they're all talking about.
Okay, okay, great, thank you, appreciate you, thank you.
The gas aggregation, I am still trying to find contact information, but hopefully I'll reach out to them by the end of the week to get an update on what we're at on that. Paige did send me the up-to-date numbers for her, traffic details year-to-date is 224, traffic stops is 175, and they have already surpassed all of 22's data on the stops and the traffic details. So I don't know that there's, the, I'll, I'll highlight the October 21st touch a truck kind of for the touch a truck and, what's she called?
Trunk or treat.
Trunk or treat as well as touch a truck at the same event.
So actually, a question about that, so for trunk or treat, do we want residents to help support that? Because I know a lot of those trunk or treat, you know, things are, people come and bring candy and support it.
Paige is listening, so she'll probably respond to me, I cannot answer, the police is leading this one, Public Works is going to help out as well, but I will ask that question if she is not responded by the time.
Okay.
Faith and first responders, they have a thing on there that they're been slated for the 4th of October, and absolutely, is what she just said.
Good, so. Because, I mean, that's why I understand, like, in other communities, they want people to come out and like.
Correct.
Support that.
Correct.
So people would, so people would reach out to police department, reach out to Paige?
Reach out to Paige or to dispatch, and they will get them the information.
All right.
And we'll get stuff on Facebook, too, so.
The other thing we want to highlight is, is the Mills Lawn code event is, they're looking for either the 3rd or the 4th of the October to be able to do that event.
Cool.
Yep, I just had a, I mean, thanks Johnny, and this isn't, so just a reflection, looking at the, the format, with the, you know, the pieces, so thanks for doing that. I think just for, I don't know, a council reflection, you know, for you Johnny, too, I think ideally what we want to aim toward, I think, is having sort of like measures of success, right? Like right now, it's sort of like, here's a bucket, this is like an area that we're doing things in, so just for all of us, I think as we move forward, ideally, we want to move towards having like a, this is the goal of the thing, and here's how we know whether or not it was, like this, it's helpful to get the activities, and we haven't ever got them in this context before, so it's helpful to have a sense of like what kind of stuff is moving. I know at like the housing committee, for example, we obviously have, are on hiatus right now, and we get back, getting back to like, here's some goals of like, we're aiming for X number of these different kinds of units, or here's what we're shooting for, so we know then what, we're hoping that staff is spending time on what we're actually putting our money toward. So anyway, just naming that right now, it's a, it's good, it's a step in the right direction, and I think we all have some work to do to clarify what our goals are and how we measure if we're on the right, on that right path.
Carmen?
So, okay, really quickly, I mean, I, I'm satisfied with this, and I think that when you report, you will like add the progress, so you want to see it written.
Oh, I'm just saying, right now, I don't, I don't think this is Johnny's responsibility at all, I think we came, we, we came up with, I mean, it was, there was conversation with staff engagement, obviously, but it was, this was council saying, hey, these are our top priorities.
Right.
And I'm just saying, right now, they're basically four big generic buckets. There's pieces that are in it, if you look at the old, you know, the other council document, there's things, but a lot of it's not super well spelled out, in terms of what, what would we, what would, so let's take economic development, for example, what would success look like? How would we measure it? I don't think we have clear metrics for that right now. That's okay, I'm not blaming it on Johnny by any means, I'm just saying, as we move into next year, as we go forward over time, as we work with YSCC.
Correct.
Having specific metrics of things that we're aiming for will give us a sense of whether all this activity going to meetings and things is actually leading us to.
Sure.
The thing we want to accomplish.
Okay, makes a better sense.
Yeah, so I've kind of thought about two things related to that, and one is, you know, maybe a task for all of us, because we do hit on a lot of things at meetings, like, you know, I tend to have a laundry list of things, and, and I'm going to mention a few in a minute, that I think capturing that in an email or a conversation, so, because it's not easy to like track all that stuff. But the other thing that has come up before is also approaching this with like a, a strategic perspective, which I think is part of what maybe Gavin's, you know, getting at, is like, you know, beyond like great accomplishments, you know, what, what are the like ultimate goals and, and how are we getting there? So I, I agree with that as well. So maybe I'll just kind of highlight a few of the things, all right. Um, all right, so one of them is not directly related, but, um, after our meeting the other day, I realized I left my, uh, computer and bag and everything down here. So I was down here like at 6:30 AM. They let me upstairs to go get it, but I was like, did somebody steal it out of my car or whatever, you know, but it was there. Um, but I noticed that, uh, two cars were like hooked up to the EV chargers and I guess I just, and again, we don't need to answer it now, but I remembered we were trying to resolve people just keeping their cars there like overnight or whatever. And so, I mean, maybe they came in at 6:00 AM and like, you know, plugged them in, but I just wondered where we're at with that. So we don't have to talk about that now, but you know, um, so we talked about trunk or treat. Um, I think Johnny, you already know that, um, Mitzi is, is, you know, raised some issues about trees that need to be trimmed in the right of way and like who's responsible for that. I think you got that under control.
Yep.
I was curious with the water, I saw that we're billing for six, um, but producing nine, so, so that's, you know, two thirds or whatever. And I just wondered, um, you know, is, is that because we're still like tackling like?
That particular one is because we also drained a million gallons out of the.
Okay.
Tower.
So that was, that was a little bit different.
Correct.
Okay, cool. Um, I wondered if our building on Walnut Street is being advertised since we did not, um, come to an arrangement with somebody else?
No, you're correct. So we, Amy and my, Amy Kemper and I, uh, have talked about it, it is on our agenda for when she comes back.
Okay.
Uh, and we're actually going to reach back out to that same, uh, business and they, they want to talk again.
Okay, good. Um, great that we're keeping the ball fields, uh, up kept. This always reminds me, are these special interest groups contributing to those activities? Um, and then, is this MC parking? Oh, yeah, this is maybe, this is either for Mayor Pam or Paige, but I noticed that in June, we had 61 citations for parking and in August, we had 16. And I guess I never, I, I had never noticed that we had done citations for parking.
61 would have been during street fair.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so I just wondered like what that was about and also.
August would have been Art on the Lawn.
Okay. So, yeah, interesting. And I mean, if we're collecting on that, I just hadn't really seen parking violations before. I'm not opposed to it by any means. Um, and then the last thing is, um, are we getting closer to some kind of timeline for, um, traffic safety initiatives? Because, you know, we had another letter in the packet and just, yeah.
So I, I did reach out to, uh, the county engineer, um, and now I'm reaching out to Choice One and to LGB. The county is going to do a traffic study, but they're only doing it from, uh, US 68 Fairfield down to the bridge and that's as far as they're going. So I'm going to reach out to, uh, Choice One, he's meeting with me tomorrow and see if they can do traffic study in the whole entire village and what that's going to cost. Uh, I have actually done some more research on some portable speed bumps, uh, their little hockey pucks kind of deals. Uh, we're getting a price on them. Uh, we're also looking at some, uh, little signs that have, uh, they're blinking for the speed limit signs and stuff like that. So we are getting closer. I can't say that we're going to solve it all tomorrow. Uh, we did, Kevin and I went for a drive and I showed him some of my concerns for Dayton Street. Uh, the project on Dayton Street is going, uh, extremely well. They've got concrete poured and they've already got some of the bump outs. If you've been down Dayton Street, you've seen some of the traffic comic bump outs already, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, to me, as long as we are continuing to communicate.
Correct.
What we're doing, um, but, you know, it, it's surprising to me when I think, I also saw that in August, there were only three traffic stops or whatever. And so I'm trying to like rationalize, you know, folks saying people are speeding all the time on Fairfield and they see it like non-stop with the fact that we only issued three tickets. And I mean, honestly, I'm still okay with doing like, even if we just did minimal like, uh, speed cams or whatever, like in a couple spots. And if that means we lose a little bit of, you know, state revenue, um, for safety or whatever. But I guess I just want to like better understand that and Carmen sounds like, looked like you might wanted to say.
Well, I think that, you know, from just doing the minimal, minimal research, the thing that, um, most, is most effective against people violating the speed limits are tickets, citations.
Yep.
Um, and that's, that's what, that's, that's the thing that, that, that deters and changes, uh, behavior, drivers' behavior. Um, that's the thing. Uh, we talked about, Johnny mentioned a couple meetings ago that when he was a contractor, um, and everybody knew Yellow Springs was a speed trap, you know? So, and I don't, you know, I don't, not to say that I want to be, I don't, I don't want to increase instances of interactions between the police and, and people. It's not what I'm saying. But if you are violating the speed limit, it isn't safe and someone could get hurt. That's not pulling someone over because they have a taillight out or because they have a cracked windshield.
Right.
It's a safety issue.
Right. And the only thing that I can say and for the PD side is, is when they have one officer on and they go to sit on Fairfield or they go to sit on Corey, and all of a sudden somebody needs help or needs service, they're not, they're not spending their 12 hour shift sitting on Corey or on Fairfield.
Of course.
So if we wanted to have an officer do that, then we may have to see if Paige can have overtime on a, on a special day that we want to have zero crackdown on speeding and have one officer.
And she did mention that.
She did.
And I think that would be, I think that is, is a.
Right.
Great idea. An undetermined time.
Correct. Not noticed.
Right.
If you're speeding, you're, you're going to get a ticket.
Right. Or, you know, again, I mean, and so I think, yeah, that like kind of, you know, we talked about that, like no tolerance week, but, I mean, also if we need to think about like some targeted, like, I mean, investing 40,000 of our like local government fund for public safety might be worth it as well. Um, and then I said that was the last thing, but I, I do want to reiterate, since you have that, uh, meeting about street fair tomorrow, um, I'm really concerned about not promoting bike parking because it wasn't promoted last, last in June. And now the group's talking about just, if nobody cares about it, we're not going to do it. I, I think it's really important. Um, and I guess I just want to like highlight that, you know, I don't want us to lose like how this event has made the case in the past for a significant investment of taxpayer dollars, uh, just around promoting local and all the ways I began the meeting with. So I really want that to be emphasized, um, uh, when you talk with the chamber.
Ooh.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Um, so we are in old business and, um, it looked like from Paige's report that there's not an update on shared dispatch. Is that right?
There is not, we actually got a, uh, email from, uh, Xenia today. They looked at the changes to the contract. Now, this is not shared dispatch, this is just our contract with, uh, Green County and Xenia. They have made some changes, are hoping to get it back to us for Amy to look at again by the end of the week. So we'll be bringing legislation next week, next time to sign the contract for Xenia.
But that's 911.
That's 911, uh, but we have not got an update on shared dispatch. Uh, it's, we're waiting on the other people.
Okay. Okay. And then I probably should have mentioned it with the minutes, but, um, my understanding was that, um, Judy, it's Jamestown, Cedarville and Cedarville University.
Correct.
To the three entities.
Yeah, only, the only, whoever was speaking only spoke two of them, so.
Okay.
Only wrote two of them.
That's cool.
But yes, I do note that.
Um, okay, so we've, I think we've talked about traffic safety. Anything else you want to add, John?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Um, and so with the event fees, I don't need 10 minutes. I think my memo is pretty, uh, complete and Judy helped add a few things. Um, but I guess what I want to highlight is, um, you know, one thing that we can weigh in now about or wait until, uh, the committee meets again is, do we want to continue the vendor fee thing? Um, you know, I kind of highlighted in my memo that, um, you know, there are always going to be growing pains, but we have a process now. We've got information on the website, we're going to develop a portal. Um, we made it, I think, clear to the event organizers that it's not their responsibility. Uh, we appreciate that the chamber did that for street fair last time. We appreciate that Art on the Lawn did it, but that's not our expectation at all. Um, and so, um, in my mind, you know, we'd like the information to be out there, that this is what you're supposed to do. Um, but then, you know, we don't want to put any extra burdens on folks. Um, but I think at this point, uh, what we decided we would wait on is to get accurate numbers on event costs and then bring everything back to council with a recommendation, vote on policies or whatever. But, um, the design of the sponsorship piece in particular is that there will be a committee that will vet it, that will bring it to council with recommendations. So we don't, you know, spend an hour talking about each event and, you know, what's going on, you know, so that happens ahead of time. So I feel like that's all looking good. Um, so I don't know, uh, you know, Johnny, you were in that last meeting. Carmen's part of the committee, if you want to add anything else, but, yeah, I, I wrote a pretty detailed memo, so I don't have a lot more to add.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, questions, comments?
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Um, so it seems like last meeting, um, there was, um, discussion as to whether, whether the form was in final enough stage at the time for folks to fill it out, but it's my understanding that the vendors were anticipating a, a, a final form.
So the form that's in the packet is, was updated with the village values and like what you should ask for. I think the one thing that's missing is accurate numbers on what your event costs. Um, and that's kind of where that reference to, um, Amy's planning to budget, you know, initially for what we did this year.
Right.
Um, and that's something that we can discuss, discuss during the budget sessions. But, um, so that form, I think is pretty close to final.
Right.
But yeah.
So, but when will it go to the vendors?
Um, that will be the form that Judy's going to share with them at this point.
Okay.
So that version. So, yeah.
Very good. So I'm, uh, yeah, I'd support moving forward with, uh, getting the form out, getting information from the vendors and sort of balancing that with what we, Amy's plan right now in terms of the budget that was spent this year and what.
Right.
The projected numbers for next year.
And I think we're going to continue to be flexible is my impression. Carmen?
One of the things that Amy Kaye mentioned during the initial meeting was the village pursuing, um, these larger builders and contractors, um, focusing on, on the Rita and on that. Um, one of the things that I took away was that pursuing it this way, um, was a burden on, uh, staff. And, um, also, um, it stressed a lot of, you know, stressed a lot of, uh, of the vendors out, especially the smaller, the smaller vendors. So I want to think about what that's going to look like, how we're going to make it more streamlined, um, and communicate better and how we're going to pursue, um, this Rita stuff with the, with the builders and the contractors.
Yep.
So, I, I mean, I know, and, and she can speak to that.
Yep.
And I, you know, she can speak to that when she gets back, but that's.
Yeah. And I tried to capture that in the memo, like just to be like, you know, I, I mean, we all have our own biases or whatever, and so I think I'm usually pretty upfront about mine. Um, but that being said, like, yeah, I, you know, I agree.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, you know, bias, okay, this is an op, is a neutral observation.
Right. And I, and that's why I wanted to like express that, you know, that's where I think we feel like maybe we're missing, you know, with those contractors and other folks that are in town. Um, so I want to make sure that we're looking at it that way. Um, I think that's what our next special events meeting is about.
Okay.
And that's why I also, related to the vendor fees part, um, think it's important to have another engagement with the event organizers and like talk through what those stress points are and everything. So, um, so yeah, so I think that we're building all that in and then, you know, I want to, you know, bring back like an honest assessment, um, you know, about, uh, about all those pieces. I, I guess to me though, I mean, of course, the first time around, like it's going to be awkward and, you know, we got to build processes and whatever. So I guess I also want to understand now that we've got those forms in place, like, is it still problematic or not? But we, we should discuss all of that.
Yeah. We, this form right here is in place.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
This one's good.
Very, very.
The one that Paige is currently and has been working on for almost a year now, we just need to put up the right numbers to it for when Amy Kaye gets back and Paige and myself will put the right numbers to it. That way, when somebody has an event, they fill out this one packet, it tells them the exact cost and then that will go to the committees and, and they'll say, well, the village is going to give $5,000 for a $7,000 event. But it'd be hard cost, hard numbers and somebody can click on the website and know exactly what their events want cost.
Yeah. But yeah, but I think vendor fees is a work in process and, um, you know, I guess what I've always said is initially I was interested in capturing the folks that are working in town on all these construction projects and the folks that are here like eight months out of the year that don't have brick and mortar. Uh, yeah, Mark, come on up. And then Gavin, I know you wanted to say something too.
Mark Heis, Yellow Springs Chamber. I'm a little confused because it feels like we're conflating a couple of things. Um, at the meeting with the event organizers, it was very clear that there was a delineation between the, um, the budgeting and the event, um, and event issues and the vendor's fees. I came in after the meeting had closed and we, and you asked if we had any additional comments. And so I'm really worried that we're conflating the two issues and especially when we start folding in, um, and lumping in contractors with event vendors, I, I, it is, it's, it's hard for me to understand why we're doing this.
Right. It, it came about because when we started talking about capturing the contractors that are here for months, you know, working on something, and then we were like, oh, but what about like, you know, the tie dye guy that's downtown, you know, for eight months? And then, oh, what about special events and those vendors? It did all come into one ordinance, but in terms of the discussion, we're not going to conflate those. So we're going to continue to talk about those discreetly and get input on all those pieces.
I was just wondering why the events committee was talking about contractors.
Just because it's part of that, um, it was part of that ordinance. So, yeah, I mean, we had kind of like three segments. Um, and actually partly because since there's so much going on in town, I wanted to just like remind everybody that if we've got like revenue options, so, yeah. So I probably confused it a little bit, so. Thanks, Mark. Gavin?
Yeah, so just a couple things.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. So first of all, I think what I'm hearing in general, and I saw in the memo what you were saying, Brian, the idea that the, there's an ongoing thread of stakeholder communication, that just to telegraph, like, that's the thing I'm most looking for. So that the ideal scenario for me is that there's like, we've talked to everyone, everyone is agreement, and like, somebody comes up and says, this is good. Just trying to work, that's what I'm, that's just a telegraph. That would be the ideal scenario. So it seems like a lot of those pieces are going in the right direction. Glad to hear it. Keep it going. In terms of the, I think you're asking sort of a question of wanting some feedback. I mean, you kind of brought up like, any general direction around this like vendor thing? I'll just, without knowing any more than what's been said here, my general sort of take was, is that I think about our staff also as a stakeholder in this context. I guess I wondered if, was there any other way to find a line? So for example, knowing that you're looking for a line of, let's not ask our event, you know, folks to be distributing Rita forms, and if we didn't before, that the communication's clear about it. Is there any other sort of way to find a line between essentially the bigger revenue sources slash, you know, wealthier entities? And so that would be the, so I don't have any hard and fast yes vendor fees or no vendor fees, but if there was some way to find a line that felt reasonable, that didn't pick off little people that are coming for one, because I don't know, I heard people talking about like, they don't want to come back to Art on the Lawn because they don't want to have to fill out all the paperwork. And it's like, that seems silly, right? So there's got to be somewhere. I'm not saying that, anyway, you get what I'm saying. There's a line there somewhere. So that's my feedback on that piece. And then the only other thing I was going to throw out there is just having looked at the form, the like special event application. So I guess I'm assuming that if somebody was trying to figure out an event, that they could call and like talk, because it's complicated. I'm just thinking if I, like, I remember when I was starting to do public events, when I was in my, you know, early twenties and I would get a form like this, and it would immediately make me go, I don't know how to answer this. And then I'd be scared and I didn't want to do it. So I guess just, the only thing that I wonder about is just putting something on like right at the top that's like, call us here if you have questions, or something that's like encouraging before you get stuck in the paperwork and get scared.
Check out that link that's mentioned in the draft blurb and see what you think. Because Paige in particular did some work on creating a portal. And that's why, like, I don't want to just say like, oh, we had some hiccups and so like, we've got to abandon it all. But I'm also open to, yeah, like you said, picking off the little guy or whatever. I will say specifically to Art on the Lawn, supposedly 16 vendors said they didn't want to deal with it, even though the organizers were paying for their fees. But they had like, they easily were able to fill those spots because they have such a backlog. So I mean, you know, but again, that's where it's important to have that stakeholder meeting. And we want to hear, you know, how Street Fair vendors felt as well. So that will all happen.
Where is the thing you said for me to look at, the link?
There's a little draft blurb, and it links to, there's the vendor permit application and then the FAQs.
In your memo?
Off the homepage?
Yeah, but it's, but it's in the memo. Like, there's a little section that says, here's what we'd like you to share. And it doesn't show up as a link in the memo, but it's.
No, it's right above it.
Yeah, it just, it's like.
It doesn't show as a link.
It doesn't show as a link. Yeah.
You talk, okay. So make sure we're talking about the same thing here. What I'm talking about is when you, that's related to the vendor fees, right?
Yep.
What I'm talking about is the events.
Yes.
So when I'm looking at the Village of Yellow Springs special event application, it looks super thorough. And absolutely, it seems like if you filled it out and everybody knew.
Correct.
But then I'm looking at this and I'm like, boy, there's a bunch of questions here that, so what's like the, was like the zombie people, you know, like I'm just imagining some people that do the smaller events, like this would be, could be hard.
So let me answer your question. So it's about communication, communication to the event holders, communication to the vendors, whoever. Where we're going is we're streamlining this. So you will start and stop with Samantha Stewart. Any questions, Samantha, you can walk you through the form. Paige is going to have it all together to where it's literally, Samantha can help you if you can't figure out the form. Paige has got it all down. We just have to get to that point. We, we don't want somebody to call Kevin to say, hey, how do I fill this out? We want to start and stop with Samantha, because what Samantha does then is turns it around to staff, and then she really coordinates with staff.
Great.
Hey, we need roads closed for block party. We need roads closed for Zombie Fest. So the key point to this whole thing is, is communication, where we stop and start communication.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
And that's a great point, that event permit. I had never seen that until our meeting last week, myself. And so I think that's where we're trying to design this portal that's like in the find it fast section of our website so that, you know, people can access it. Okay?
And before we move too far, Johnny, I meant to say something to you about the manager's report. You know, I expressed concern about my excitement about seeing the street sweeper out and about. And it was, it was fortuitous, if you will, that you picked a great home to take a picture of the, I don't know exactly who lives there, but you picked a great place to show that the street sweeper was out operating. And I'm sure everyone on that block is really happy.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So we have no new business. And I see that Lisa Abel's here. So when we get into board and commission reports, Lisa, did you want to highlight anything about the economic development? Why?
I have one.
Okay, come on up. Yeah, because this is usually where, if we've got any things we want to throw in.
Yeah, the, I think as we may have announced last, last meeting or sometime in the last month, the YSTC received a Department of Energy prize for feasibility study of community solar. And we're going to, we're going to have a series, sort of this iterative process of community engagement sessions, getting feedback, questions, figuring out what we don't know, and then doing a lot of work with technical experts and trying to figure out what the questions are we should be asking, and then what, what answer, what some of the answers are. So again, this, you know, this kind of relates to the electric study, you know, some questions that have already come up with the small group were things like, could we mitigate some of our consumption by applying some sort of community solar project toward just helping to power the water plant, for example, during its peak loads, or the water treatment plant during its peak load? So, so anyway, I just wanted to say that we, Meg attended our first meeting, and we want, we have to work with Village staff on this project, even if it's just feasibility, because you all know a lot more than we'll ever dream of knowing about how all the electric grid stuff works. So I just want to put that plug out there that we're, we're excited about the project and we do want to work with, with the Village on figuring it out.
Excellent.
And then this project goes till summer of 2024. If we decide that we think we want to take the next step, whatever that ends up being, we are eligible to apply for another $200,000 grant from Department of Energy to further that. So, and then we could also say, eh, no, that was fun, but no thanks. So either way.
Great. Well, I appreciate what you put together. And I think, you know, moving forward, you, Johnny, and Judy can coordinate on at least monthly reports. So, because I thought there was a lot of great information on that one page. So thank you.
Yeah, sure. And I, you know, to my earlier point, I know that our last meeting was the day after Labor Day, which is also when there was a council meeting. It was, I think it was Johnny's first.
It was.
Council meeting. So I understand why you can't do it all in one day. But anyway, just, we appreciate the collaboration with the Village.
Thank you.
Lisa, I do have one question. What was the grant for on the first grant for the dollar amount?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Nice.
I mean, I will just elevate a few things that I noticed in reading the minutes and whatnot. I really appreciated that Planning Commission is thinking about, you know, being more proactive about things like, you know, I know you guys went through like each individual saying what they want to see. And I like, you know, again, I'm not just about, you know, biking or whatever, but I like that Gary, you know, is thinking about like how we have bike parking in our zoning code. I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think Planning Commission should be doing. So I appreciated seeing that. From Environmental Commission, I appreciate that there are some discussions around reducing the environmental impact of our events. But I also, I guess, want to highlight that I'm a little bit confused about the language I read about like asking the chamber if it's okay to have drones instead of fireworks. And I guess, again, since Kevin, you're our liaison, and since Johnny, you're in those meetings, I don't think it's about like, it's more about collaboration to me. So I think that if this is something that makes sense for our community, you know, ultimately, I always hear people saying, you know, who's, who's in charge? And I don't want to think about it that way. But at the same time, like, you know, we have all these events to support a vibrant community. And so I like it to be approached in a different way. And maybe it was just the way that Mary Ann wrote up the notes or whatever, but, but it's not asking for a favor. It's about, let's collaborate to make these events better for our community. So those are the things that like struck me. Does anyone have any other boards and commission stuff?
Well.
Yep. Yeah, Gavin?
I guess if it's not, if you don't want to talk about it right now, I understand. But, you know, Lisa had brought up earlier the idea of Johnny going to YSTC meetings. Is that something you're comfortable with, Johnny?
I had planned on attending, but it was also my first council meeting.
Yeah.
And all that. So I just need to know when they are and I want to attend, yes.
Yeah, that was a bit of, sort of an anomaly. We talked about it. Normally, it's rare that both meetings are on the same day. But in the past, we've pushed the YSTC out a week, and it just didn't happen. Fortunately, we didn't have executive session that, that day because it was a tight turn, because even that YSTC meeting went long. Yeah, so it was, but it's rare that we'd have that conflict.
Correct.
But that was a perfect storm, if you will. Yeah.
And Meg went, Meg went to the meeting for the first one at the Emporium for the grant. And then she informed me I had a pre, a pre-appointment already before it was scheduled, so.
Right.
That would be great.
Yeah, that's great. And I didn't say it when we looked at the manager's report, but just all of the like, we went and talked to these people and all the partnership stuff. It is helpful to get a sense that we're actively out there talking to people and, you know, working on those relationships. So thank you.
Yeah, no, it's very, I was impressed as well. We're covering a lot of stuff, so.
So since this came up a couple of times, you guys may not have seen it, but I did send an email asking, you know, you referenced this meeting tomorrow with Chamber that I'm not aware of. So I've asked Mark and you guys to let me know what.
And normally, normally there has not been a council presence, but I guess I'm suggesting that there's enough stuff with Street Fair that it would probably be a good idea. I mean, I know in the past we didn't have that, but yeah.
Somebody tell me when and where.
It's at four o'clock in the art room.
Okay.
And it's just to go over October Street Fair.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. So future agenda.
You added a broadband update. Should be good with, hopefully, getting that contract with City of Zena.
911, yep.
Yep. And I think we may have an ordinance amending Village Income Tax Code. Ready?
Okay. And we are going to talk at the next meeting about, I guess, initial thoughts on the village manager piece. I think, again, with the caveat that we know we've got an election coming up and so, but I think that's good. Yeah.
Just on that piece, I looked at that. I know I brought it up and I want to talk about it, but I'm also, do we need to like prep anything? Or is it, you have stuff? Okay.
I mean, I just have all that stuff.
Okay.
Doing the searches and all the various steps.
Oh, are you thinking about like putting in the prior agendas and things we've done?
If you want, I mean.
Yeah, we could like, yeah, that might be good to see what we've done.
So you could give us an idea like what it's cost or how long it's taken and what some of the steps are. Okay, that would be helpful.
Recreate those.
Yeah, I'm just, so we're talking like, this is just 10 or 15 minutes to get some information and then get a take on sort of where we're at? Okay.
Yep.
Great.
I have something I want to add. Continuing volunteer efforts at Ellis Pond.
Good. Anything else? So I guess, are we, are we going to be doing some like prep talk about budget at the next meeting or?
Did you say prep talk or pep talk? I'm sorry.
Actually, I think, I think it could be prep slash pep. But I just wonder with that first session coming up, are we?
Well, and that.
I see that October 12th and then, yeah.
That goes along with something, Judy, I had emailed you about it. I don't think that we were saying the same thing. So just to make sure. So if we have ideas about things we want to consider for budget, potential expenditures, is the best time to bring that to the meeting on the 12th? And then if so, like, what's the sort of like expectation? Is it like, just come with a list? Like, I have a little list of ideas, but do I need to like write something up? Or do I need to have a number associated with it or?
See, it's varied from person to person, but I always think early and often, if you have a thing you want, it's like making your Christmas list, keep on saying how you want that puppy. Get it, get it in early, get a cost associated with it. And then Amy's got enough knowledge of the process that she'll say, great, thanks, I'm putting it in this file, and we're going to have this discussion at this meeting in this kind of a way. I'm sure she's got her head wrapped around that, but I, as early in the process as any, everyone can do that, I would say is most useful.
Yeah, Mary Ann, for example, has been really good about writing up like her requests. And I think it's, it does help.
And I guess what I'm wondering is, there's at least a few things that I've got that are, I don't know whether there's any interest from anybody. I don't want to spend a bunch of time working on it or thinking about it if it's like, no, that's a terrible idea. So would it be okay to just make essentially a simple, just like a little paragraph or a couple of sentences and then have that by the 12th and maybe before the packet on the 12th? Before the packet on the 12th? Is that, am I hearing that right?
And then we'll, we'll let you know if it's a horrible idea or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's exactly right. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Carmen. Yeah.
Or if we can get behind it.
Well, I think.
For, for that packet, yes.
I think at a minimum, Judy, we will need something on the bud, on the October 2nd agenda to just kind of like talk about the budget process, you know, just kind of here in the meetings, here's what's happening. So, so we should plan on that. Anything else? And of course, we'll be celebrating a Public Power Week on October 2nd, so.
Oh, Judy had put in the message about the, like, at the end of the meetings when we have like three minute things. I guess, you know, right? When we bring up stuff on future agenda, it only takes three minutes. I was just going to say, I don't know if any, if other people agree, but I would certainly be supportive of you just setting a timer when that happens, and then we're on the same clock.
I would be supportive of Judy setting a timer whenever she feels like she wants.
That sounds like a little much, but I just want to acknowledge, I saw that and appreciated. I think it's good to have accountability to it.
And it's actually not, you'll remember last year when we were doing this retreat and that sort of thing, there was this general agreement that anybody who adds something to the agenda, I didn't, don't think I said it right.
to the agenda, I didn't, don't think I said it right, whenever you add something that wasn't previously on the agenda, then it's limited to three minutes.
Yeah.
It gets moved accordingly if it, it drags on longer, I mean, continues to be discussed longer.
But if we all have an opportunity to speak, am I able to yield my time to a colleague?
Never. Absolutely. No.
The only time we've broken it in a while was the Antioch one last week, right? We ended up spending 10 minutes or something on it.
Well, that was not my fault because I didn't say it.
Anyway, the point is, is good flag and let's do it. Let's call this out on the front.
And then maybe just thinking a little bit more in depth about traffic safety and, and you know, the timeline and some of that stuff. So, all right. Anything else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Mary Ann, vote.